Morning, everybody. We're gonna start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll have to do it bash on ourselves.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Welcome to June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. In attendance in the room, we have Katie Casey, our Assistant Director of Finance. We have Major Bashaw, we have Leila, we have Allison Van Klaske, we have Commissioner Godu and myself, and then in Zoom, we have Commissioner Foyle. We have Sheriff Lysayos, we have Captain Stacy, and we have Catherine Mann on Zoom. So with that, we're gonna start our pre-openings for dishwashing, laundry chemicals, engineering, and maintenance services.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu? Yes, this is from Foyle.
Yes.
I will vote yes. A search and rescue grant, night vision equipment.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion in the motion?
I have just a quick question. Did we get some night vision equipment last year or the year before?
Uh, we got a handheld, I believe, thermal last go-around. This is all part of that NHTO grant where they essentially, they send us a letter saying you've already been awarded this. This is the stuff you can spend it on as part of our participation in that group. But uh, so whenever we get the night vision ones, we try to get one piece at a time, uh, because pretty much the amount of money that were allotted only afford us to buy one night vision device usually. Uh, and obviously to get a team of people out to do certain stuff, we need more than one.
Okay.
Further questions?
Thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. All right, we're on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additions, subtractions to those minutes? Uh, hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Um, okay, so now we've got the payroll.
Um, I move to, uh, let's see this. Okay. Um. I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes a payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for the period ending June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. We're on to reports. I would go to Commissioner Foyle.
Good morning, everybody. Um, so over finance has been very busy, and I think everybody was in attendance probably but me, but the budget passed uh, last night, so that's great news. Um, really great to hear. Uh, we have a moose plate grant uh, application that's out, and that will be for some of the restoration work over in the Registry of Deeds for the red, the restoration of the books. So yeah. Learn it down, Kathy. Um. The bit finance department's busy with the financial financial statement audits, UKG conversion, and um, otherwise all is well there. Long-term care, um, there was a really great turnout at the Alzheimer's Caregiver Education Event. Surprisingly high turnout, which is great. Um, so nice to see that support. Um, there was the, the common room at the assisted living facility is open, and one of the things used to celebrate was a, a cocktail hour, if you will, and um, I, the residents are thrilled with it. And I'm gonna conclude long-term care, but we've gotten a number of, recently a number of really, really nice thank you letters from family of uh, residents. Uh, one was saying, this is a one letter, and I'm just gonna read parts of it in response, a thank you note in response to the remembrance ceremony, celebration, and it said, uh, "To say that I miss my mom goes without saying. I also miss all the staff on her unit who looked after my mom with love and attention." Please pass this note on as gratitude towards them. And then we have another that just says almost the similar things, just extolling the quality of care given to family members. So the impact is substantial. Anyway, it's nice to, nice to get those recognition uh, letters in face of everything else and all the challenges and tribulations. Uh, the population at the Department of Corrections is at one forty-five, holding steady. Uh, hiring's going well, and generally, uh, morale is high with, uh, the start, the digging of the new building, so. That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Foyle. Commissioner Godu?
Uh, Register of Deeds and County Attorney will give their own reports. I have nothing else to add here.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to reach out to let all the department heads know. Obviously, they know that the budget's passed, but I wanna thank all the department heads and the employees that worked very hard over the last couple of months for the budget. They did a fantastic job. Um, it's really nice to see that the delegation supports us. Um, but that also goes uh, to basically not only selling the budget itself, but the reasons behind the budget, and that's, you know, again, staff commissioners are to be commended. So thank you very much, everybody. Um. We've got the new budget, which is great. So that's all for me. Um, we're gonna move on to engineering and maintenance services, a bid waiver request.
I move to approve the tri-state generator proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of seven thousand, seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents to replace the radiator, and I'm sorry, sixty-three cents to replace the radiator in the Blaisdell generator and authorize the shared chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Department, Department of Corrections, uh, the Securus Technology Services Agreement.
I move to approve the Securus Technologies Services Agreement Amendment and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Superintendent.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Finance Office, um, cases there. Uh, it's a fiscal year. Write-off approval, and I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three write-off totaling three hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and Registry, Register of Deeds.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, the amount is three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents.
I'm sorry, yes, three hundred and seventeen dollars. That was in the detail, three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. So amended.
All right, so on the amended motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Human Resources, uh, we've got the exception request for open enrollment deadline.
I move to approve an exception to the open enrollment deadline for various employees as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I.
Commissioner Foyle?
How are we gonna deal with the sort of regular, uh, late respondents?
Allison.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean, Commissioner Foyle.
Well, I mean, it seems like there are some frequent flyers in terms of, um, not completing their open enrollment.
Yeah, um, so we're moving over to the new platform. We're four years into our electronic open enrollment. And in speaking with a lot of my HR colleagues internal, you know, to the county and external, um, I'm, we're not gonna have the capacity to reopen with the new platform as well as we do now. The second part of that is we can't, we're going to an automatic feed to all of our vendors. We're right now, we're not a hundred percent feed to the vendors. Meaning it, our information's gonna download. Uh, it holds up the process for everybody. We can't push a feed through until we have everybody accounted for. Um, so my recommendation is a lot of, I'll come back in a month, and I'm gonna recommend a communication to all employees that we will no longer accept, except, you know, exceptions, and that they, whatever they, if they don't complete it and it's not done in its entirety, then the benefits that they have from the previous year will stand, and they can't make any changes. There's a lot of a lot of information that has to flow between us and Cigna, Northeast Delta Dental, the uh, carriers, the other carriers that we have, and um, we can't push a feed unless the whole feed is, is accounted for. So that's why it's a short feed, uh, window right now. And if they don't do it, we're pushing the feed out on the twenty, the night of the twenty-seventh. The feed has to go out on the twenty-seventh to some of these vendors. But I don't feel, I think people have enough knowledge to know. The portal's open twenty-four seven. It's not like it's only open for a small window of time. We're available in our office for phone calls. I took a couple of phone calls while I was on the conference after hours to help people through. But um, they, they should know how to do it now, and uh, there should be no excuses for them not completing that information. It's, we're, we're going on five years now. So it's just a lack of them wanting to do it, but we have to account for everybody, and we wanna make sure we do, but that would be my recommendation. Um, that's how it's done with a lot of other people that have online open enrollment. You have that period. If you don't have it, you hold to the benefits that you have from the previous year.
Commissioner Foyle, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Godu?
I'd like to suggest that, uh, you have a policy, and I would just stick by the policy. If they don't want to bother to adjust their open enrollment, so be it. When I, uh, have we made exceptions in the past that you've made changes after the open enrollment period?
It's not after, it's during, yeah, we extended, so.
You've extended it in the past.
Right, because our policies in the policy handbook said that exceptions can go before the board. However, our open enrollment period is our policy. That is, the open enrollment period is from here to there, but we have had people that have come before the board or asked to come before the board, so we've done that. Uh, when we transitioned from paper to electronic, it was a give and take. Okay, it's, you're learning, people have some problems, they get locked out because they haven't used it, uh, they forget it's one year to the next, but I think my suggestion would be what I'll bring before the board, and then I'll communicate it every month from now until the next open enrollment, and that way it's very clear and it's communicated, and we've documented it.
Further question? If not, we've got a motion on the floor, Commissioner, on the motion, Commissioner Godu? Yes. Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will, yes. Um, revised job description in Sheriff's Office?
I move to appro, approve a revised job description for NCIC Technician effective June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will, yes. Onto long-term care services, adult medical daycare grant request?
Approve an adult medical daycare grant dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to Easter Seals, New Hampshire, in the amount of a hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents for the shipping cost of the recently awarded picnic table as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I've seen none on motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Now we're on to department head updates. I'm going to ask Allison to start.
So we're, um, deeply ingrained in, um, a lot of things right now. We're doing the payroll change notices for the COLAs. Those all have to go out. We hope to have those issued by later today or tomorrow morning at the latest. We have all of the stuff for, all of the CBAs, the CBAs for all the changes, the wages for those. We have the two CBAs that are going out today to the different, um, the two unions that we negotiated. Um, we did, Chuck and I, along with our two, uh, implementation groups for UKG, um, we are pushing back the live date to January. Um, there's a lot of different things going on, um, and we wanna get it right, and we don't, we wanna have as minimal uh, issues when we roll this off to staff and for those that have to use the system. So our best judgment was to say not to push things and rush, so that's being moved out. And both departments are very grateful that we've come to that determination. Um, and I'm just working on some, um, MOUs with Chuck, a few things that have come up that we have to do. And, um, Jason and I worked on the facilities usage policy, so it's been very busy, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I, I, I apologize. I wanted to mention before I started, Department heads, that, um, Pat Conway, uh, Jude Gates, and Jason Henneby have joined us in Zoom. So for the record, their, their hair is blonde. So, okay, now we're gonna move on to, um, Katie, case.
Good morning. Um, I don't think I have anything further to add. Commissioner Foyle covered it all.
Okay.
Finance is busy. We're starting the twenty-two audit. That's underway. We're working with the implementation team for UKG. Business as usual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. I'm gonna go to the sheriff. Sheriff. You're on mute, Sheriff. Can you hear us?
We can't hear you, Sheriff.
Technic, technical difficulties. Um, I'll just, I'll just chime in. I know, obviously, we're incredibly busy with all our divisions. Uh, uh, I will say there is a tremendous amount of, uh, peak interest and I think good morale overseeing construction starting across the street. Uh, there's a lot of excitement around that, and I'm hearing through our, not only our employees, as well as employees in other areas, so that's, it's really, it's really it's really great to see those, the bulldozers and the other equipment out there.
All right, Sheriff, Sheriff's on now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, just emphasize on, it's great, the bulldozers over there, putting up that building. It's been long overdue, and, uh, and, uh, I'm very impressed by last night's meeting with the delegation, uh, when it came to budget. Uh, I wanna thank everybody that works for our office and all the departments in Rockingham County, and especially the county commissioners, where we all came together as a team. We got this budget done. It was a great budget. Uh, delegation was phenomenal. I think it was probably one of the easiest meetings that we've had in a long time. But it shows you what teamwork can do in this county, and Rockingham County is number one in this state when it comes to teamwork and getting things done. I really appreciate all what the county commissioner's done for the sheriff's office and for the county. It, it's a pleasure, and, and that's it. Nothing new to report.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, since we're gonna keep it in the sheriff's office, and Catherine Mann, I don't know if she wants to say anything.
I'm all set. Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks, Catherine. Um, all right, we're gonna go to Kathy Stacy.
Well, good morning. Um, not too much to report, uh, over here. Same old, same old. We've had some good transactions happening. Um, I did wanna let you know, or update you with regards to the Association of Counties. Uh, we were obviously very successful in a lot of the bills that we were following. Um, the one that, um, I was there for the signing of the budget on, uh, Tuesday, which was exciting. Um, and then yesterday, I attended the committee of conference with regards to House Bill seventy-five, which is the attempt to redistrict, uh, Stratford County that, uh, obviously is gonna be going back to committee conference on the twenty-ninth. We expect that the two Democrats that sit on that committee are gonna be replaced by Republicans, and then they're gonna probably vote to approve that piece of legislation. So we're gonna be working pretty hard to, um, try to get the House to non-conform. So we'll see, what, you know, we'll see how it goes, because I'd rather see that happen than a lawsuit, to tell you the honest truth. Uh, because that's, that's the road it's going down, so which is unfortunate, but, uh, other than that, um, I I wanna know if Jason Smith is having a birthday.
Uh, that was yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Oh, oh, I like it. Very nice.
On that same topic, on that same topic, I, I planned on at the delegation meeting, I was gonna grab the mic and have everybody stand up and sing happy birthday. But Representative SciTech was very quick, as usual, to adjourn the meeting, and so I did let Jason know that I had planned on doing that.
Thankfully, the meeting was adjourned.
Well, that's wonderful. Happy birthday. I know that tomorrow is, is Robin's birthday, so you're in good company, Jason. You're in
Thank you, thank you.
Anyway, thank you. That's my report.
All right, thank you, Kathy. I just wanna say and stress, the, the work that Kathy does for NHAC is extremely important. There's a lot of the stuff up at Honker that affects county, um, daily business, day in and day out, and she's up there watching the bills that can affect us, and she's working very hard at it, so we appreciate that, Kathy. Um, Pat Conway, I'm returning.
Morning, everybody. Um, we're busy as usual here. I don't really have anything new to report. Um, we're just busy and doing our job and moving forward, so not much to report.
Right, I heard the workload has lessened by half. Is that true?
By what?
Never mind. It was just a bad, is a bad joke.
Okay, yeah, no.
Yeah, I said the wor, your workload is cut in half, but I but I know it's not. I know you're still busy over there.
No, it's not. We're, we're crazy busy, but, um, but moving forward, and my, my people are doing a good job, so I'm proud of them.
Good. Uh, Jason Smith?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Birthday guy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, let's see here, no COVID cases we, to report. Um, as Commissioner Foyle mentioned, we had a great event, um, part of Jessica Wendell's, uh, role as community outreach. Uh, we are hosting uh, different community events each quarter, uh, so we invited the Alzheimer's Association to come in. We had close to forty participants um, coming to learning about dementia and communication styles and just best practices around, um, helping a loved one um, manage and have a successful visit with someone that has dementia or Alzheimer's disease. So, um, it was well-attended, and so I really appreciate um, the collaboration with that partnership we have. Um, in addition to that, we're hosting CPR training that continues. Um, uh, we at a hundred percent compliant here within, um, the community, uh, for the nursing home and assisted living community, so we are opening it up. So if anyone is interested, we have, uh, two trainers on site um, that will provide, uh, CPR training for anyone that's interested. Um, the IN2L devices have arrived, uh, the residents are, are having a lot of fun. Um, I trialed it the other day. I crashed a car and an airplane, so, um, I need to practice a little bit more on those, but yeah, everyone's really enjoying it.
Did you run that through Primax?
Thankfully, it's digital. Um, the residents will be participating again this year in the St. Vincent's, uh, DePaul Food Drive, so we're excited about that. The residents really enjoy, um, contributing to the greater community in this, um, fundraising event. Um, and again, um, the residents are loving their new, uh, space in assisted living, um, the community room where it's, uh, just a, a great, uh, environment for residents to enjoy cocktails, to activities, to games, meetings, puzzles, and just a great space for family members and loved ones to come together and have, uh, some quiet time to sit and relax and, um, talk, so, um. In addition to that, we are expected to have survey anytime. We continue to prep and get ready for that. Um, so we are in our window, and I expect them probably towards the end of this month, which we are here, or next month, so we'll see when they arrive. Uh, that's my report. Thank you.
Jason, has the dishwasher arrived yet?
No, it hasn't. Um, it has not arrived, but, uh, drawings are being done. Jude and her team are working on that, um, on that project, and I do know that there's another meeting that's going to be set up and scheduled, but I'm sure Jude could comment more on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm gonna go, uh, Jason Henry. Morning.
Good morning, everybody. Um, shower project's still going well. We have half the unit done. Uh, Jude's, uh, team will be working on the other half the unit. We gotta switch inmates around. That's going well. Actray machine, uh, is, uh, on a fritz right now. We have them coming in to look at that, to, um, hopefully do some repairs. Um, let's say, you know, again, commissioners, the budget, uh, thank you for helping get that through. We're very excited also for, you know, Jude's department, because her department affects all the rest of us, where lack of, um, people she can hire, so that's gonna be, if we can get people on board, a lot more things are gonna get done around campus, and that would be fantastic. Um, just to let you know, like, over here at the jail, even though we have like a hundred and forty-five inmates, things have changed over the years. We only have twenty-five sentenced inmates inside of here. And over half them have charges that would preclude them from going out to work, and I'm, I'm not the only one. This is, uh, across the board in, in New Hampshire of the lack of sentenced inmates. So the court sets, swung the other way for the longest time, and uh, you know, the pendulum seems to be, I believe, going back the other way, but slowly but surely. Um, but just to let you know, that's where things route, why it has been perpetual, putting people back out, back out. They have all these charges, and I think the courts have started to get sick of those, where people are tired of these, you know, back on the streets where they should be inside. You know, taking care of business, because they've done, um, you know, crimes. Uh, last things, I did have, uh, my first, um, meeting beyond the Board of Trustees for the retirement system. That was an eye-opener. It's a lot of stuff inside there, a lot of things I have to learn, um, but, um, definitely getting a deep understanding of how the retirement system works and those kinds of things. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. I'm gonna go to Jude Gates. Morning, Jude.
Good morning, everyone. Nothing new to report. You saw my briefing yesterday. It's, it's all about the new building. People are very excited, stopping me in the hallway, even nursing staff, and everyone's been kinda waiting for so long. It really is very exciting. And it, you know, so far, they hit the ground running for sure. They're very, very busy up there as well, so it's all good. We are, um, very happy about the budget going through last night. I'm particularly grateful that the union cost items were approved. Um, as Jason says, I, I really hope that they're just gonna be knocking down the door starting on July first. We could really use the help. Um, we do have a meeting next week with the dishwasher folks. We're meeting on Wednesday morning to do a final review of the drains and the steam and the electric and et cetera, so hopefully we'll sign off on plans and get things finalized starting next week. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much, Jude. Leila, I'm gonna ask Leila if she got anything she wants to share.
Um, nothing from me.
Nothing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think we've done everything here, so let's go to, I'm gonna go to, um, new business, old business. And Commissioner Godu?
I would like to suggest that we cancel our July thirteenth meeting, uh, for the Board of Commissioners. Uh, Leila's gonna be on vacation. I believe it's not an AP week, and, um.
So it is an AP week?
It is.
I did speak with, uh, Chuck McRusen about this, and because it's year end, he said it would just create some issues if.
If we did not have a meeting?
If, if, right.
Okay, I'll do that then.
Yeah, I, I suggested having it the week before, um, and it's just, he said it's just kind of confused things, it's, it's caused problems, so he suggested just an AP-only meeting for that week.
Okay, Commissioner Foyle?
Commissioner Godu, I can, I have no problem coming in on that day. I have no conflict, so we only need two for Quorum to do that, so depending on the two. Go ahead.
I'm available. I was looking to Mike Mckernan, Leila. Yeah, uh, since it's vacation, and she shouldn't have to work if she's on vacation, that's all.
We can, we can make it an AP-only week. Just be in and out real quickly. You wanna do that?
Yes, please.
I wasn't planning on working.
Yeah, you can do that before you leave.
Well, it's like, you can do whatever you want.
Set up the agenda for us, we just AP.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Yeah, okay, AP only then.
It seems like all the commissioners are on board with that, so. Commissioner Foyle?
Yes, um, we just have a couple walk-ins, so I would like to move forward with some motions.
Okay, yeah, go right ahead.
With respect to the, uh, an HR motion, I move to approve a bid waiver request for Gallagher Benefit Services in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and twelve cents for services beginning to July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
The last been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I think we had a discussion in the previous week. Yeah, so hearing not, no discussion, I'm gonna ask your local on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will, yes.
And I'd like to make a second motion with respect to an inmate administrative transfer, and I move to approve an admini, administrative transfer dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, transferring an inmate from Bellknap County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty-one as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, and, and then we still do have non-public, but let's get on to public comments. Is there any public comment? I don't think there's anybody from the public.
Yeah.
Uh, and if not, I will entertain a motion to go with the non-public.
Move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A colon three two A, uh, regarding personnel matters.
Second motion's been made and, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will, yes. Thank you, everybody. Again, thank you very much for your Thank you, everybody. Again, thank you very much. It was hard work on the budget. You got a good one, so.
Is the first one gonna be ours?
Uh, who's, who's staying for the public?
Okay. Yeah, um, first the sheriff.
Yeah, Commissioner Foil, you have a motion?
Yes, we're back in public session after coming out of non-public and we had uh five different topics that we took on. Um, for simplicity, on uh issues number one, three, four, and five, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely at this point because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Okay, look, second, motion's on the floor and seconded. Um, any discussion on that? If not, I'm gonna take a roll call. Commissioner Godu? Yes, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And the last one?
On number two, I'm not moving to seal those minutes.
At all?
I don't think it's necessary. It was with respect to an action uh with uh HR.
Number two, I don't remember, HR? Yeah, okay, I, I vaguely remember. I was thinking the same thing, but, okay, so we'll just take a motion to adjourn when you're ready.
And I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. On the, on the motion to adjourn, I have to take a roll call on this because Foil's on Zoom. Uh, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Leila.